And three stories is different than what we see today. We see nothing today. So, and I realize what perhaps they would want to see, but it's not going to be that. So, I looked at what is reality and this building is not one solid building of three stories. It's one story, it's two story, it's three story. It's articulated. So, it really doesn't look like it's just one massive building, but that's another thing that could be done is to make this look like the Sunloft Center looks like different buildings. It could be made to look more like it's a series of structures as opposed to one large structure. So, through architectural detail, I think Mitchell would know what that's all about. So, there are some objectives that could be achieved in that manner. It's one of the reasons why I ask about the canopy of the trees at maturity, because if I lived across the street, and I'm going to have to now adjust to three stories across the street, I want to be able to look out and maybe that canopy is taller at maturity and so it masks that better. So, it's, it's, I agree with you Lynn. It is a tough decision. We live and we know of everyone, so it's not, we are a close community, so we want to make the best long-term decision.
I'll throw out one more comment.
Yes.
Just one more comment and something for you all to think about. With renters, you have a totally different caliber of resident versus homeowners. And, and that's one thing you should really think about, because renters do not have the same mindset about the maintenance of their facility that they live in, in many cases. And I can tell you, I have a rental house next door to me and across the street from me, and I've never had a resident that lived in either of those two houses that maintained that property the way the owner would if they were living there. So, that's something that also has to be part of the decision as far as what the use of the property is going to be.
So, at this point, we need a motion.
I'd like a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
With the, with the conditions.
With the conditions. So, on number five.
With the conditions as amended.
Amended, as amended.
So, on number five, we added the landscape plan. Right? Did you write that down?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we added, we took out the word continuous and we put opaque in, in number nine.
Right. And we added eighty percent capacity in number eight.
On number eight?
Yeah.
Does your motion include those amendments?
Yes, it does. My motion includes all stated amendment.
Your second, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Can I have show of hands on the nay? Was there one?
I'm an aye.
Four to one.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're still in the meeting. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Citizens' comments on the consent agenda. We are now on the consent agenda. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, approval of the minutes, a resolution for the bylaws of the HPAB, the monthly litigation report, and the master solar agreement approval. Anybody like to speak on those items? Seeing none, anybody like to pull any of those items? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay. Regular agenda, citizens' comments, regular agenda items only. Presentation of the branding project proposal by Aqua. Approval to use Let's Work for temporary staffing. The resolution for the interlocal agreement with the sewer master plan. And the fiscal year 2018 general fund budget update. Also Gilchrist Park playground design, the Harbor Riedeville Magic on the Water, event permit, and discussion of temporary event signage. If you would like to speak on any one of those items, now would be the time. Please take this podium over here, state your name, you have three minutes.
Julie Price, Friends of the Gilchrist Park Playground. I just want to thank the city for allowing us to be an integral part of the playground, playground, and the choices they made were unanimously approved by our citizen group and we're just happy to be part of it and are looking forward to completion of this project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. Craig Holt with the Four Points by Sheraton, talking about Harbor Riedeville Magic on the Water. October the 21st, we'd asked that you support this event. It's going to be a great event. Brought out a lot of people last year. We're asking for the harbor walks, first time we've ever asked for the harbor walk to be closed between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. because of the number of people we're expecting for this event. We think this will benefit the event. It'll be a very small time that we'll ask for this to be closed, but it'll give us an opportunity to take better care of the huge amount of people that are coming, not only from in-town, but also from out-of-town, as our hotel will be 100% full. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' comments on any of those items? The regular agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into the presentation of branding project proposal with Aqua.
For the record, Dave DiMaggio, Aqua Marketing Communications. As you all know, about sometime last year, we were hired to devise a brand for the city, but also as part of that, a communications plan to move forward. Once we have the brand in place, we want to be able to communicate it effectively. Let me just go over what we'd like to talk about this morning in this presentation. I want to talk to you about the communications plan itself, the objectives of the plan, give you a little recap of the discovery process that the agency has gone through. Talk to you a little bit about comparative analysis of other cities and the targets we plan on going after with the communications plan. Want to talk to you about appropriate growth approach, which is a big part of defining the plan, which way we go, what appropriate growth means for the city. Want to talk to you a little bit about elements of the new city branding, although that hasn't been presented to you yet, we can't talk about some of the elements at this point. And also then finally, strategic communications recommendations. And then, of course, what costs we've been looking to. This is a budgetary item for the city, so that's why we're in front of you this morning. The planned goal is to create, we really are presenting a three-year strategic communications plan to provide city leadership with a clear roadmap toward a more organized, coordinated, and effective communications and branding for the city. Now, this is something that's really come right out of your own strategic plan. You'll look in your own strategic plan, you do have this in there. Part of your strategic plan is to identify the city's brand and market, its lifestyle and infrastructure qualities with the assistance of its many partners, and also to develop a cost-effective strategic communications marketing plan for the city. So, we're here today to go over that with you. Some of our objectives for the plan, we want to have really the city leadership to reclaim the role in defining the city through a coordinated communications efforts. Okay? We'll talk about that a little bit in depth, but in a sense, in many ways, there are a lot of voices defining what Punta Gorda is, but few of them really are city government. So, many people are out there really defining who and what you are and really taking your image into their hands. We want to also develop a consensus to support development strategy focused on appropriate future growth. Also, the plan, plans to centralize city communications to ensure consistency, quality, and message discipline. We also want to educate the city leadership and key community stakeholders regarding what our brand is and how we should communicate, not only the brand, but other aspects of city messaging. And we also want to provide you the tools and also our key stakeholders in order to adopt the brand and promote that here in the city and beyond. So, a little bit about where we are on the process. We've just come through the discovery period. We have completed that, issued a complete report to the staff that the discovery period was really the agency doing its research, being here, having formalized research, knowing what we have to deal with, and eventually making it a recommendation from that discovery. We are finishing the aspects of brand creation. This is kind of the fun part, I think, what we've all been looking for. We don't have that today, but this is going to be reported to you very soon. That's in development right now. As soon as we finalize development, which we were just weeks away, then it goes back to formal research for testing. We go back to the market to make sure it's going to resonate, not only with those here in the city, but those outside as well. And then we have a formal written plan for communication, and that has been completed and presented to staff as well. The report has been issued and that has been part of your materials presented to you before this meeting today. A little bit of our discovery recap, some of the things that we discovered during that period, it's, Punta Gorda, as you know, is primarily residential area. It's fairly up-to-date. We're not seeing decaying properties, there's little urban blight. However, you get little housing for younger working families, that's just not part of the infrastructure here. Still, there's plenty of lots available for building, it's very affordable, very affordable waterfront, some of the most affordable waterfront in the state. Exceptional recreational offerings, very charming, walkable downtown, strong sense of history, and a great visitation potential. A little bit about your communications history, the city itself has not promoted itself. Okay? The city government has not promoted itself as a place to live or visit or relocate a business. Okay? Somewhat unusual, when we talk about cities your size in a minute, you'll see that other cities are doing this. The promotion has really essentially been left to others. In some ways, a very smart, wise decision. You've got some great partners in town, folks like the Chamber, the County VCB, Department of Economic Development on the county level. So, you've really allowed others to do that for you. That's certainly saved some costs, but the problem comes in when, in doing so, you really surrender control of your image and your message. Okay? You don't really control that. Really, you have communications in place, good communications such as the websites and sending managers' weekly report, televised meetings like this, social media, press releases. These are all great, these are all very inwardly focusing. When we talk about the future and think about the future and who we want to know about Punta Gorda, if we want to consider relocation of businesses here or our future residents, we're going to have to be more outwardly focused. So, these are very, very well-done, very inwardly focused. We did see during discovery, a great deal of what we call stakeholder participation. There are a lot of groups that are really heavily involved in the city, heavily care about what the city is. We've learned, we also issued during this time, a survey, online survey, to the citizenry of Punta Gorda to get their inputs on brand and communication. We've had over 100, excuse me, over 440 responses. Very high-level engagement by those in the city. Many people involved in several groups at once. You do have the opportunity to utilize of the partners such as restaurants and lodging. They have extensive outreach outside the city, so we want to look at having them be part of our future communications and branding. Now, our conclusions, we're recommending to you that the city take control of its message and its image. Without a single point of coordination and contact, the city could be vulnerable. What I mean by that is that there is no communications director on staff. This is unusual for a city your size. There is no one that takes over in times of crisis, clarifies the issues. You do have an issue where things may not be as clear, may not be as specifically communicated or as efficient as it can be. So, we're recommending that there be a single point of contact, such as communications director. The other big part of our conclusions here during the discovery process, we've become very aware of the shifting demographics in America. You know, the city of Punta Gorda, as you know, the last several decades, it's really been developed through residential, residential development. You've had a great deal of, many people coming here who are retired. You've really had the baby boomer influx that has made the city what it is. The situation you have as of 2015, the baby boomer generation essentially falling off. You now have the millennial generation at that date taking over, becoming the biggest part of our population, the one that's going to drive things like home ownership and businesses and even political processes. So, as we move forward, it's going to be about 20 years before they make those same decisions that the boomers have made that have made Punta Gorda what it is. So, we could have a 20-year lag period here before we see, even if they decide to do the same thing the boomers had, decide to retire the same way, decide to come to Punta Gorda, if they do, you're not going to see that effect for about 20 years. So, there's a concern about generational backfill and whether or not you're going to be able to maintain the space of residences and essentially things like your tax base and your infrastructure and things like that. So, you could be coming to a very vulnerable period because of that. The other thing we're seeing related to that, you have surrounding communities such as Babcock Ranch, Northport, that are specifically targeting the millennial generation. As that generation moves forward and is going to be buying residences and is going to be relocating, is going to be bringing businesses to the area, those communities are specifically going after that. And so, what we're recommending as part of our strategy, if we sit back and just allow that to happen, Punta Gorda, as we like it, as we love it, as we want to preserve it, it's going to get really tough to do that. Okay? Given those shifts and given those sets of really whatever competitive shifts that we're seeing. Now, we're recommending two broad sets of targets. We have an internal target in our communication, basically the stakeholder groups in our community, city leadership, residents, and businesses. Alternatively, we have, excuse me, external targets, relocation targets. These would be potential business relocations to the city and potential residential relocations to the city. We also would target visitors, but not explicitly. We could do that through some means. We have to be very careful that, you know, we've got a great visitor bureau here that has the money and the means to do that and will support your brand once defined and will be a marketing partner for you. So, our efforts will really be to coordinate and be a great partner for the VCB. And we will talk a little bit about the possibility down the road for visitor infrastructure. You have done some things that are great over the last few years that visitors enjoy once they're here. It's those sort of places that you should put your time, money, and effort into being a great place to visit. One of the things that we noted in all our research, about 90% of the people that are here that chose Punta Gorda chose it through visitation. They happen to come here on vacation, a big part of those just visiting friends and relatives. So, we know that's a very important part for us to plug into and support. And looking at those comparative cities, our research did lay out which cities are very comparative, could be compared to Punta Gorda. Of course, you and I would like to say there's no place else like Punta Gorda. We understand this, it's a very unique city, very unique town. But there were some that the research did tell us that these are something that we would call analogies. In marketing, I'd like to use the term a competitive set. So, these are those cities. The thing that's very interesting about this, when you do the analysis on these cities, the level of brand development really kind of varied from city to city. Some had very strong brands in place that were developed through processes such as what you've gone through, let's just say in Augustine. But some of the cities demonstrated very aggressive economic development efforts. This is very interesting, whether they had branding in place or not. They were out there realizing that they kind of had to get out there to make sure people knew where they are, who they are, whether they're, and make them aware of them and have them be considered as a great place to come live, work, play. Most, almost all these cities, 90% of them have designated communications persons reporting directly to city management, city leadership. So, these are four, just four organizational charts we drew from different cities such as Sarasota and Sanford and others. But every one of these has somewhere in their chart, someone who's a communications director, where things can be solidified, clarified, and maybe more efficient for the city. Some of them are also handling some economic development activity as well. So, I've used the term appropriate growth approach. Our belief, given what we talked about as far as the generational shift, as far as your competitive set surrounding you, really the city of Punta Gorda is at a critical decision point. Okay? Now, the city is going to have to consider growth to survive. It just, that's, that's just really what the numbers are pointing to. That sustained growth does require proactive steps, and our communications plan is really reflecting what communication should be in order to do that. It's not your growth plan, but it is the communication side to support that. So, it's essential for the development of the city. And if we want to preserve Punta Gorda as what it is, we're going to have to, have to get to work. Now, the thing we found out through our research is that the majority of the city understands the importance of future growth. Matter of fact, they pretty much say that's inevitable. They get that. But they're equally concerned with unchecked growth, anything that's going to threaten the small-town character of Punta Gorda, it's going to keep, make Punta Gorda different from what it is today. Okay? We believe that growth can occur, appropriate growth can occur, that doesn't upset this balance of what Punta Gorda is. And we can keep our character, we can have a more thriving economy, we can guarantee that we have residential development stay in place. So, that's what we mean. When we say appropriate growth, it's really the growth that the constituency that we have in the city understands and accepts, because it's a growth that really benefits everyone. So, our communication strategy does focus on the appropriate growth. We really, it's really helping the cities, particularly the first year, understand what appropriate growth is, help the city and citizenry embrace the idea, and also looking for key members and organizations within the community to be ambassadors for that message. So, some of the elements, let me just talk about the city branding. Of course, we really don't have an official brand in place. We have to recognize O-COM's Great Ork on it, it's happening on the harbor. Essentially, it's a logo and a tagline. It's not put together through, say, some of the same processes that U-Haul have initiated. But going on to the brand that you will see soon, some of the elements of that brand, you'll see things that we understand that what our brand is, it's a place that's intimate, it's connected, it's relaxed, it's safe, historic. You know, the small-town aspect of it is a very, very strong positive. It feels more like a neighborhood for most people. And then they, they tell us that it's really a town, it's not just, you know, it's not, it's more than a town. It's a community, and they understand what community is and the people, the fact that people come together. The fact that the harbor is very important to the brand, and we'll see that play out in some of the brand, but also the fact that it is on the water, it's surrounded by water, that hometown feeling, the Mid-American values, the fact that it's very much an enclave of people that are very similar and share values, these are all aspects of the brand that you'll see coming forward when we talk to you about the brand. Now, just to get into our strategic communications recommendation, to give you general overall blueprint, the first year, year one, we're really, at this point, we will have a brand developed, and what we have to be sure is that the city adopts it and reflects it in every way. We don't want to just go out externally and start saying, making a claim about the city, this is who and what we are. If people coming visit the city, relocating to the city, you don't see that demonstrated. If we don't have our key stakeholders, whether it's the Chamber, County Economic Development, the VCB, some of the other organizations in the city, not knowing what that is and not reflecting that, it's not going to work for us. So, the first year is a great deal about getting our legs under us and being really sure that we've, we are developing that communication that is going to allow us to claim the brand and demonstrate the brand right here, the fact that we all know it and that folks that see the brand demonstrated here on the street level. Year two and three, basically on year two, we would recommend going external, with an external campaign to say who and what Punta Gorda is and why people should consider it. It doesn't mean, we'll get a little more in-depth than year one in a second, because year one is a budgetary concern for you all. But year one, we do have some external facing, but nothing really is so much as devoting a great deal of budget to external facing. We're not exactly going out and pursuing new businesses through economic development terms. Year three, we're looking at long-term measures to really kind of allow a perpetual plan to roll forward. Now, our goal in year one is develop the strategies, the tactics, to encourage the community itself to understand what the brand is and support the appropriate growth approach and to be able to implement the new communication director initiatives here in the city. Some of the tactics, and just give you kind of an overview, highlights that we're recommending in year one, some new things for you all. We're recommending that city council consider work sessions in dealing with application of the brand as well as communication issues. These could be alternative weeks in city council meetings, but this would be less structured, not Robert's Rules of Order. This isn't time for public comment. It's time for you all to work together on some of these issues that we're highlighting in our report. So, it's an opportunity for open dialogue and communication on some of these issues. A little different format than I believe that you all have experienced. Another thing that we're recommending is the establishment of a Blue Ribbon Panel on Responsible Plan Growth. This would be citizens that are respected across the political spectrum that can advise you on issues of plan on growth. So, that you have someone to refer to, that will have looked at specific issues as they come up and you can defer to. And so, you have the ability to utilize this group as a representation of the citizenry. As I've mentioned, a big part of our plan on year one is for you all to establish a communications manager position. This is something new for the city. There'll be new communications protocols, but what we get out of that is a consistent, unified voice, consistent unified communications. The other thing is really important too, in time of crisis, we aren't trying to decide who's going to discuss, what, when, where, how. You've got somebody in place that understands communication issues, how to deal with not only the citizenry, but with the press, and it also would have to be somebody that understands economic development issues as well, because that's going to have to be a dual role for this person. Not somebody right out of school. This is going to have to be somebody that has had this position before, that understands what the, what's necessary, but also to provide some leadership on the city staff level to pull the city staff together and to revise the protocols. A big part of what we've seen during the year, the agency be very involved in this as well as helping the new staff member, is to, is basically establish a roadshow through the community where we get out and explain what the new brand is, what appropriate growth means, and to educate all facets of the city on city messaging, branding, and the vision. We also want, part of that is to generate a community acceptance and goodwill for our initiatives. Obviously, the materials are going to have to be put together to really codify and what our, our brand is and what our message is, so we, obviously, part of our plans and what we plan to do is to make sure that those are set down and collateral and things like this. Also, part of the collateral would be specific talking points, expressing key ideas for the public, for you all, to make sure that the entire community understands specifically what our brand is, what our communications is, how we're positioning our community, where we are, and what appropriate growth is. One part that is outwardly facing, now, we've got a great website right now, it's a very inwardly facing website. If you're a citizen for the, in the city of Punta Gorda, you're served very well by this website, by the way. The issue becomes, if you've ever looked at it from the eyes of someone who might be considering the city from the outside for the first time, it's a different story. I don't really necessarily find what I might need to know to consider the city for a business relocation or for my own residential relocation. So, it's a great website, but we're suggesting along with that, the creation of a micro-website focusing exclusively. Do we need that plugin? Someone in IT helping me out here? The microsite, we'll let somebody else handle that for me, so. Hey, John, unless you're here, thank you. The microsite would be outwardly facing, would provide that information that someone from the outside would need. Of course, we're going to be also handing off to those in the community that can help us so much, such as the VCB, such as County Economic Development. So, but we want to be really sure that when people look at us from the outside, that we serve them as well as we serve our own citizens right now. Can I ask forward? Yes, I can. Along with this, of course, is social media. Again, we have great social media focusing inwardly to our citizenry right now. We're suggesting social media channels to be developed to push externally. Okay? Very, very important in the online world for SEO, making sure that we're found. So, if we're going to establish a microsite, we want to be very sure this is supported. We want to be really sure that we leave that digital trail out there for people that, considering our community, see that it's vibrant, it's, it's a place where things certainly are going on and things that support the idea of relocation and of businesses. are going on and things that support the idea of relocation and of businesses or residents. The other thing is important, too, we do this right, it's, it's a method of engagement. So we have people considering our community, but it's, it's not just pushing information out there, it's actually going to be able to engage them and be able to draw them into our community and establish that sort of communication with them. Obviously, there'll be materials, such as printed materials that the city's using, will have to be re devised or reflect the brand. This is a big makeover for any town, so if we're going to have a new brand, we're going to look like our new brand, sound like our new brand, it does mean that a lot of the city's communication, right down to paperwork, is going to have to reflect that. So year two and three, not to get into too much detail, the information that we did supply you prior to the meeting does give some of that detail. Year two really would be to go more external with paid programs, smart paid programs, to allow us to draw attention to the city for relocation purposes. Year three would be really ongoing programs, sustainable programs that allow us to continue to have awareness and help have people embrace the city. Now, some of the things that the agency would see doing in the first year to help you out, I don't have this memorized, so I will need this back on the screen.
No power.
No signal.
There's IT.
All right, so they taught me in, in public speaking school that moments like this, you whip out your best joke. Knock, knock. That's all I got, sorry. That's all I got.
Laura Whedon, can we ask a question?
Yes, I was going to give him my tablet.
Question is, when you refer to a microsite?
Yes.
Are you referring to like these sites that are, if you do an internet search and you get a, a particular city, but it's more focused on hotels and things going on in the community and as opposed to the official government website?
How it's specifically developed is yet to be seen, but we certainly would want someone to be able to find a site, find the pages on the internet that speak specifically to their informational need. So to your point, yes, whether it's freestanding or not, or part of your existing sites to be, to be determined.
Okay. And, and the other question I have is, so we started this process back, thanks to Laura, back in, in July last year, and, and so I kind of always thought we were in year one, but year one would start, and gathering from what you're discussing.
Your budget, your plan is to have all the branding wrapped up in about the next two months, we should be fine with that. Your next budget year starts October 1, correctly? So we're looking at really the communications plan and the application of the brand applying for next budget year.
Okay, so, so what you're talking about, the year one would start?
Correct, October 1.
Got it, okay.
Does the Elmo work when the, it doesn't work when the laptop's down?
Mira, I can, I can move on, I have an output, so if that would help you.
Okay, we have, I mean, we have it on our, on this presentation. Temporarily until?
Here we are?
Ah!
Okay. So some of the things the agency would propose doing for the city, besides hiring of the communications director, we would help organize and present, document those community outreach that we're talking about, the workshops, the panel meetings, the VIP events, and other presentations to help the city understand the citizenry and various groups and key stakeholders, and what is our brand and how are we moving forward and the importance of the appropriate growth strategy. We certainly have the ability and will guide, orient, and mentor the new communications manager. I think an important staffer that we have right now, that some of your staff have met, is Elliot Cohen on our staff, he serves at our West Palm Beach office, but he is the former Public Information Officer for the city of West Palm Beach. He absolutely understands how to set this up and how to help that person kind of get the legs under, under them a little bit. We obviously would handle graphic design, creation of required collateral materials during that period, also aid in promotion with doing things like the, the website, the social media setup, the microsite setup and management, and also the creation of content marketing, which is primarily the social media. We can aid in the setup and management of that, there'll be a calendar presented for that as far as what we're posting, when and why, but also we want to be very topical, so if things happen and we want to be able to respond to that. But we'll work that in conjunction with the communications manager. And all, obviously, redesign of all existing city collateral signage, other things that we see the brand can apply to you, so that's a big part of the heavy lifting in year one. Now, the question is, where, since this is a budget item, where are we for fees? We are recommending to you that the communication manager be an experienced communication manager in the corporate side. Personally, I would prefer someone from the governmental side as well, so, someone that has experience in this sort of position. That's typically going to come in somewhere, as you can see, just above sixty and just above ninety thousand, okay? So they're degreed, they're experienced, they've got to have a couple of positions like this under, under their belt. The agency fees, you can see there for the first year, would be eighty-one thousand to, to handle the, the, the different service areas that we talked about, also work alongside the communications manager. First year only, let me just say that. You know, first year, things are pretty busy. Once we get our, our legs under us and get the communications manager in place, we don't see this as being reoccurring expense every year, okay? So I just want to be clear about that. So we're a little higher probably our first year, and depending on that communications manager, too, we get the right person in place, it should be a reason for the agency to back off, okay? Because you've got your own person that should be able to handle some of this, if not all of it. And then we are recommending that be aware of, we estimate anticipated outside vendor charges of about fifty thousand dollars. Some of this could be handled by the city's own budget, depending on, like, if it's buying paper to do stuff, you know, things like that can happen, or sometimes the city has its own printing ability, so, but we put in there as a placeholder fifty thousand dollars just so you all could see the budgetary amount. So I know you all were provided a great deal of materials prior to the meetings, hopefully you read every word. If you did, bless you. But at this time, we can answer any questions that you might have.
Gary?
Okay, so as we, as we go into this process, by the way, thank you, it's been very pleasant, nice, and actually illuminating, working with you through these, these past months.
Thank you. There's more to come.
I understand. I, you've, you've given me a little bit of, given us all. But one of the things that, when we, as we've been going through this process, I'm not sure that we've been really clear of, is, is how are we defining Punta Gorda? Because there's two Punta, Punta Gortas here, there's the city itself proper, and then there's the service area that we hope someday will become part of Punta Gorda. And when you, you mentioned, when you talk about infrastructure and stakeholders, you brought, you mentioned the airport, but we've got I-75, we got the airport, everybody's heard me lecture about how we're going to have wonderful amounts of good quality water here shortly, and if we want to attract light industry, light and medium industry out by the airport, not PGI, which will help us keep this little town, but at the same time, those are things that I assume we're going to include in this branding process, even though right now that's technically county.
Yeah, well, absolutely. Yeah, we define what Punta Gorda is, and we move forward in doing so. Exactly.
So I just wanted to be clear about that, because we've got, people kind of know where I'm at on that.
JaHa?
I just wanted to just throw this out here. I was wondering if, what you think about extending, let's say, having a pre-year one. What I mean by that is that we, I don't know, because we have to define who we are, I don't know if we're ready for, like, right out the gate to government development. What I mean by that is that I, I find that, that in general, residents don't understand the necessity of government development, and what I mean by that, it's like, for over a hundred years, the city had a balance between, let's say, old Florida, the Gulf Coast, and seasonal residence, and that was the way it was really till like fifteen years ago. Then we got the idea that we're now a retirement place. What's, what's, lack of understanding is that if we are a retirement place, we have to have even more robust service and entertainment offerings, because there have to be year-round in order to meet the needs of retirement community. And so I think that there's some idea that a retirement community does not need to come with development, and I, and I find that, that maybe a year of agency involvement in terms of like the, the Blue Ribbon and those type of community outreach, I, I just think that we don't understand what it really takes to be us and maintain us. Or like, I look at Venice, I look at them having year-round support of their businesses, and they don't have a slowdown season where, like, if you go to downtown Venice today, you're going to have people going to restaurants, going to stores, year-round, there's not going to be like when the snowboards leave, they suffer, and I find that if we're going to be the place that we say we are now, that I think there needs to be a real, true understanding what that takes, that we really have to have a much more concerted economic effort involved. And I, and I think that maybe right out the gate, a person doing that, I, I think there may be need to, we need to cultivate that consciousness in the community before doing that, because it may seem like kind of like, I don't know, it, it may, it may not, I guess the people may not understand the buy-in, and we may not have the buy-in initially with that, because it won't really make sense, because they may not think that a retirement community needs economic development.
Yeah, Councilman Cummings, you're absolutely right, and I may not have been clear. I mean, the, the major portion of what we will do in the first year is to do exactly what you said, that's really what the first, first step is. We do have to build community consensus, and we can, and it's going to be absolutely necessary for us, if we love Punta Gorda and want Punta Gorda to stay Punta Gorda and preserve it, we just can't sit back and just hope it happens. So that's a good part of what we're going to have to get across to everyone, have everyone understand. You know, there's, and as far as it being a retirement community, maybe that might be true, but Punta Gorda is Punta Gorda. There's reasons people have decided to retire here, but that's not the only reason anyone should be here, and I think that's part of what we have to get across, and when we define ourselves, it's going to be much broader than that, much broader. Yes, Mira?
I think we're all on board that, you know, something needs to happen, because in my seven years here, there's been so many times where there's just not that person. I mean, we have no deputy assist, a city manager, I mean, Howard and McHale, they're the city manager's office, I mean, there's two people there, like, the physical bodies, the, just the people are not there. I mean, when, when the OCOM brochure, beautiful job, beautiful pictures, whose phone number do we put on the back of this thing? Like, who are they actually calling to get contact with? I mean, we don't have that person, even when we did the one hundred and twenty-fifth for the city, I mean, putting out press releases, putting out flyers, you know, discouraging the use of the city seal, we had to go through that whole exercise, because people come here and they want to start taking the city seal and putting it on things, and no, 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 you can't, you can't just do that, you know, but what can they do? Well, we don't, you know, we have, it's happening on the harbor, they can use that. It's, like you said, it's been so undefined for so long, it's kind of like we just went with it. So I, I'm on board, I, it's a big number, it's a big number, and everything we do up here, it's usually without the numbers behind it, so then when we finally see the numbers, they're, they're big. But I do like the fact that you would be there supporting, because this has to be the right person.
Exactly.
This has to be the right person, if we're going to move forward with this, with this plan, it, it all lies on who that person is and whether or not they can implement what you're planning and what you've done the research for, so.
Great.
It's a big number. I have sticker shock.
We understand.
Nancy?
Thank you very much for this great presentation. I read the discovery report, and even while I was having tablet problems over the weekend and spent a lot of time really digesting this, it, it was very edifying, because it is what the, as a former part of the OCOM committee, it's really what we had envisioned, so it's very consistent with that. And, and we actually, when, when I saw the number for the, what would it cost to have this communications person, that was very consistent with what we came up with as an OCOM team. So some of the, you know, the ongoing consultation number, it would, it kind of was like, took me back for a minute, and, and then when I realized all that was really involved and all that we would have to do, it's a big job. And so I really think it's going to help our community move forward and move forward consistently. I know we have a lot of people that wish we could just put up a wall around the city, but that's not reality, and so we will get what we want, we'll be able to define it, and that's what we've said all along. By defining who we are, it's going to help us achieve that as opposed to just letting it happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I'm really excited about this, and I know we'll try to figure out a way to find the money to make it happen, and I appreciate the partnership with the, the Visitors Bureau, because it's really, that's been a linchpin in getting this going, and will be in the future as well, and thanks to Donna.
Gary?
Okay, with, with great respect, Rachel, I don't think this is such a big number, and I'll explain to you why. I'm going to make the assumption that we're going to do this right, because we're taking so much time to discern this, there's going to be an incredible return on investment in real dollars to the city, and at the same time, we're going to be able to control how those dollars affect us. I just want to go back to the position I have, and there's a gentleman in the back that's taking notes, who's taken them before, I would like to see a larger portion of our tax burden not be shared by the residential, but also, but by the re-establishment of good commercial and reoccurring businesses. And we are in a very unique situation, where if you go west of forty-one, we are a retirement community and a tourist community. We've got an incredible economic engine, thank you very much, Patty, but we need more than just Fisherman's Village. If you go east of forty-one, you've got the opportunity to have more affordable-type housings for families and so forth, we've got a darn good school district within the Punta Gorda area, and then when you go out towards the airport to that industrial park, we have the opportunity of establishing good year-round, long-term paying jobs over the long haul. So this type of branding and this type of orientation, if we do it, do it correctly and stick to it, will allow us to get to what I would hope to be a twenty-five percent commercial burden to our tax revenue and still be able to maintain the, the personality that we enjoy in Punta Gorda and that we're refurbishing at Gilchrist Park, and that we look for the, the next projects that we want to do, because there's always going to be another project like that we want to do, we're going to have volunteers that are always stepping up, those are givens, those are part of who Punta Gorda is, but we could use a little help by developing that eastern area of our service area. So when I talk about Punta Gorda and I'm talking about this branding, I really have to, in my mind, we encompass the, the service area, the Chaney Brothers, the pulse feeders, whether distributors, or whether they're light manufacturing, or even if we could bring in a control data center. We are equidistant for all practical purposes, from Tampa, from Orlando, from Miami. What a wonderful place to have a Chaney Brothers, it's, it makes perfect sense, we can do that without affecting the personality of our harbor area, only allowing us to enhance it even more. So I think this is a small number.
Other comments? So what do we need to do?
Well?
What kind of direction would you like?
At, at the end of the, towards later on in the meeting, we're going to go over the general fund budget. At that time, you're going to need to give us direction as to whether or not you want to see all of what has been proposed, or a portion of what has been proposed placed in the general fund budget, because next week we adopt a not-to-exceed military.
Okay.
So that's when, that's when we have that discussion, when our finance folks get up there and handle the budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have approval to continue agreement with, let's get to work.
This is a temporary staffing contract, and it's now at the point where, we started this in two thousand and sixteen, it's, it's a, it needs to be approved, and is for an extension by City Council. These are when folks go on vacation, they, they're either sick, they have workers' comp issues for sanitation, and we call them in, rather than hiring additional employees, we call in staffing, temporary staffing to, for minimum staffing, so that we can provide the service. And hopefully, we won't be needing a whole lot of this in the future once we go to our automated system, but right now, we need to keep the contract.
Okay.
We have approval.
We have a motion, second to approve the contract, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Before we get to budget, Kristin, I think we'll move on to some of the other smaller items, if you don't mind, is everybody okay with that?
We do have an item C that's before the budget, it's a resolution.
Oh, where are we?
Sewer.
Oh, here we are. Okay. So this is the inter-local agreement for the sewer master plan with Jones Edmonds.
Yes, and so this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only, see, I've been practicing.
Thank you.
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, approving the inter-local agreement with Charlotte County for sewer master planning, authorizing the matter, execute the agreement on behalf of the city, in line for conflict and severability and providing effective aid.
Thank you.
This, this is actually part of our strategic plan, one of our action items was to transition from septic to sewer, primarily in Charlotte Park area. And rather than go out and hire our own engineering firm to do this master planning for us, we thought it would be most economical and expedient to just use the firm that's doing it for us. economical and expedient to just use the firm that's doing it for Charlotte County, since we are Charlotte County. And we negotiated a contract with that firm. This is the interlocal that can get the work started.
Makes all the sense. Nancy?
Yes, I think it does make sense. The Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners is going to have to approve anything that we would approve anyway. So I think it just makes sense for us to use the same consultant, so there's a lot of consistency. And throughout, I would also ask that, so we communicate what we're doing here in the weekly report. If we can put a link to what is the service area, because I got asked that this week, you know, what's our, what is this utility service area? So people that live outside of the city, but within our service area, don't realize.
They don't know who they're sending their check to?
I don't know. It was, it was a question. So I figured, you know, if we can make sure we communicate, this is what our service area is, that would also add clarity, so.
And I think, too, just to get the numbers here of what we're talking about is helpful for future decisions.
Absolutely.
You know, it's hard to discuss things and implement things when you have no idea how much they're going to cost.
Yes, yes.
Also, it puts things like Charlotte Park on the forefront. Like I went to a county meeting on utilities and, and just, it wasn't kind of outside of the mind. And so we kind of need to have the person they're working with understand, like for us, it's very important that sewer's done, because the fact that they're on canals and septic means that, you know, nutrients are going into the harbor directly.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second? We have a motion second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay. Now, we're going to go to
Gilchrist Park.
The Gilchrist Park playground design.
Where did Mitchell go?
Should we do the Harbor Riddaville?
Sir?
Let's do the Harbor Riddaville.
We have a request.
Eight A.
We have a request from Four Points Sheridan, that on the Magic on the Water event, they would like to close the Harbor Walk, as you heard previously. As we discussed this, we have been very selective on what events close Harbor Walks. And very selective. Because you know, every time we close the Harbor Walk, people complain. So this is a, an event that has requested the Harbor Walk be closed around there. How people are going to get around is going to be very difficult. At Lashley Park, it's not difficult, not as difficult, because you can go by the Justice Center on your way. This is not the case. So as you get a sense from what I'm saying, is that if you're asking for a staff recommendation, our recommendation would be no. Keep the Harbor Walk open because of where this is located, and if they can put up snow fencing to keep people off the Harbor Walk area. We know what happened last year. How people are going to get from underneath the US 41 Southbound Bridge, all the way over to Lashley Park, when the Harbor Walk is closed, that's difficult.
For the record, John Wright, Punta Gorda Chamber President. It is actually the chamber that is making the request to close Harbor Walk as part of our DRC permit. When we presented the Harbor Riddaville Magic on the Water idea to DRC, it was at that time, we were told that you'd had a few emails complaining about the memorial service for Jim Morris last year. We've been trying to work with zoning to find out what are the best ways of managing this, so people don't migrate to put their lawn chairs in the way. And really, this is for us a safety issue. It's just, the majority of the people, I will tell you, we, after we DRC'd, we have put the tickets out, of the 200 VIP tickets, 98% are coming from out of the state of Florida. They don't know Punta Gorda. They will bring their lawn chairs and sit somewhere and get in the way. Now, Craig earlier on did say from 7 till 7. That's probably the limit of what he would like to make it safe. But we would like you to consider at least closing it down during the duration of the event, which would be 11:30, so we can open at 12 and have it reopened at 6. We, as the chamber, will undertake anything we have to do to do, to redirect the traffic that is Mr. Kunitz' concern. We will put directional signs up. We'll have people standing there volunteering to guide people around this area for that safety purpose. And that's the only reason. I know this is a long shot, asking you for this, but in Jim Morris's honor, there's going to be, we don't know how many people are going to come. Last year, over 2,000 people filled it because it was his memorial. This is a more established event, funded and supported by local businesses and by the TDC, which we are very grateful for. Our goal is to bring a whole load of people from outside of the state, and it's already happening. I know that the key hotels are going to be busy. So this was our solution to try and prevent, even, snow fencing's not going to save the problem. It's, people are just going to get through the tiki bar, through that volleyball area anyway. So if we, if you can give it some consideration and give us a time window, that we can work with law enforcement to make sure that there isn't an accident with somebody cycling through the crowd, or somebody being hit inappropriately because they're walking their dog and there's a bunch of people there in lawn chairs. That's what we're trying to provide. So it's a safety issue for us. I realize it's a long shot. You have history. When we did the lighting of the Christmas tree, when the chamber was responsible for that, we closed the street so that we could at least do that safely. You've closed Marion Avenue for other events. This is just a one-time deal, and I'm asking you today just to consider it. And if the crowd gets, gets large, then we may, we will move it. We'll have to move the event for subsequent years. But for this year, we made that commitment to Four Points to do it on that lawn, and we certainly appreciate the city's support in making it a safe event for everybody attending.
Thank you. I mean, I see what you're saying, but there's got to be a way to contain the people on the property. Because what, how I look at it, you're talking about the safety of the people attending the event, but I'm talking about the overall safety of the population that comes to use our parks. I mean, that, if they, if we're, if we close that, then we're tempting them to cross over 41 some other way. And I just don't see any other, any other detour that would work.
As I mentioned to you, we'd be prepared to pay for law enforcement to have them cross safely, if that was the case.
I just don't know where they would cross, though. I mean, in front of the hotel is not, even with a police car out there, there's two lanes of traffic that's already, you know, 45 miles an hour after they've left the light. I don't know how you would get them across 41 safely. I mean, I get that it's a one, one-off. I just see it as a safety for, you know, the general public, that it, and we had, you know, last year, there were people everywhere, granted, and there were some conflicts. I don't know that anybody actually got injured or not, but I would think that the Four Points could find a way to contain the people on their property.
Is there a chance that you would be willing to put snow fencing up to have it separated from the sidewalk?
I have talked to Craig, the GM down there, and yes, we can do that, but that's, that's not going to prevent people from going through. That's no fence. You know what it's like. They do it anyway.